Okay, let's call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
The Honorable Mayor Ron Shaver.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Marler.
Here.
Doug Sashow.
Here.
Allison Powell.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here.
Okay, first on our agenda tonight is a presentation from the Brush Mayor, who goes by Charles, but I call him Rick.
Charles.
Hello, everyone. Mayor Shaver, council staff, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. On July 29th, Brush suffered a significant weather event. We had not one, not two, but three verified EFT, two tornadoes, with wind speeds estimated to be between 115 to 135 miles an hour. The dangerous part of this storm, as we learned later, is that all three tornadoes were what are referred to as rain-wrapped tornadoes, and the funnels were hidden in the clouds. We lost two airport hangars, completely, completely gone. And another hangar lost most of the roof, and we had six or seven planes were destroyed that were housed inside the hangars. We also had a large amount of power lines damaged or down, and trees down all over the city, which brings me to why I'm here. We received a call from the City of Fort Morgan asking if we could use some help with cleanup. Boy, did we welcome that call. The City of Fort Morgan sent two crews for two days to help us with cleanup of our streets as people were putting out large limb and debris in the streets. The crews you sent did a fantastic job for us. We would never have been able to clear our streets in a timely manner without your help. You know, our two communities can be bitter rivals on the football field, on the basketball court, on the baseball diamond, but it is a testament to the Fort Morgan community that when the chips were down, you didn't see a rival in Brush. All you saw was a neighbor in need of help. Hopefully, an event like this will not happen again, but if your community ever needs help, we will be there to help you shoulder the burden. On behalf of the Brush City Council, our staff, our community, please accept our sincere appreciation and thanks for your kindness and help. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. We're all in the community together, and if there's ever a disaster or a time in need, that's where we all need to come together, and it's a pleasure being a part of the community with Brush.
And huge kudos to our staff. I mean, as a council, I think our council would absolutely like to reach out to our staff, because I've heard from people in the community in Brush as well, that they were professional and humble, and they were just very comforting. You know, they stepped out, and you know, they all have their own jobs to do here, and when they were up in Brush doing work up in Brush, they were getting behind on their own work, but they did it. They didn't bat an eyelash at it. And, you know, our directors and our staff are top-notch, and you guys all deserve tons of kudos for what you do, for our community and other communities.
Thanks. Next is an update on a public art installation and possible action on a request to expand leftover funding to place a mural on the library exterior. Ms. McCoy?
Hello, good evening, council and mayor. So I thought I'd give you a little bit of update on where we're at with the bronze sculptures, as well as a little background history for the community. So we purchased the 14 bronze sculptures in 2017 with the previous community services director. We worked, Brian and I, Brian, the museum curator and I, we worked collaboratively, excuse me, with him. He purchased those from the Randolph Rose collection, and they were delivered on November 14th. Since then, we've scouted locations throughout the city where we want them to be placed, and we've worked with city maintenance department and also the parks department, so that all of us are aware of where they're going to be placed. And 11 of the sculptures, we decided, need to have concrete bases, so we have Green Brothers ready mix. They've constructed these bases for us. They have, all of them finished except for one, and that's the diversity sculpture that'll be in City Park, so they're still working on that one. Two of them have been installed. There are two benches at In-City Park where the chessboard, the outdoor chessboard is, so those have been installed. And then our next move is to install the sculptures that are going to be going at the dog park, so each dog park will have a sculpture there. One is a dog with a stick in his mouth, and one is a dog with a little boy with his arm around him, so those will be installed soon. We're hoping before the weather changes and gets too cold. But we do have, the other thing I wanted to mention was that in June, the first mural that we had placed on the side of the library building was completed, and that was put together by artist Marler, Joe Marler, and he, and that one was paid for by the Heritage Foundation. The Heritage Foundation, we had a small committee with some of the board members that helped us decide not only which bronze sculptures to get, but which mural we would choose to put out. And so he's given us another proposal recently for a second mural. We still have some money in the budget. We've, so far, we've spent $72,000 with Randolph Rose, less than a thousandth Green Brothers. So Dan's proposal is for a $9,000 to $10,000 mural, which is the exact same amount as the first mural, be the same size, but a different image. So the Heritage Foundation committee that we've put together has suggested that that be what we go with. They really liked it, so. Do you have any questions?
I can speak on behalf of the mural that's already installed there. It is just, it's fabulous. It's, if you can talk maybe for council, because everybody's got a different perspective on what a mural means.
Oh, sure.
This is actually.
This is a mosaic mural.
It's a mosaic more than it is a mural.
Yeah.
If you haven't seen it, it's right behind where the little dog statue is, and it's beautifully done.
It's gorgeous, yeah, and it was impressive watching him put it up, and he had it up in a couple of days. I mean, it took him months to create, but, you know, just to install was really quick. And we have patrons who come in and people off the street who, you know, get their picture taken next to it all the time, so people really enjoy it. We get a lot of great comments and feedback, so. And the one that he's proposed is an image of Glenn Miller, so, but it's a very beautiful image. It's lots of deep purples and kind of that image you get in your head when you hear the story about Glenn Miller getting in trouble for playing his instrument on the roof of the high school, so that's kind of what he's going for. Any questions?
And this is just out of the line item that's already, I know it's kind of like a joint bucket with the Heritage Foundation and then State Fund, so if it's already earmarked, and.
It is, yeah.
And the foundation is excited about it.
They are, very much, yeah.
Yeah. Sounds like a good idea.
Great.
Are we just giving direction? We don't need to.
No, we'd actually like.
It will be a resolution.
Resolution to approve spending that leftover funding for this purpose.
That's on my agenda.
So if there is no other questions or comments, I would entertain a resolution on the request to expand.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution expressing the city council's support for a grant, whoops, sorry, wrong one, a resolution approving the request to expend leftover funding to place a mural on the east side wall at the library.
Second?
A resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a presentation and possible action on a resolution expressing the city council's support for a grant application for great outdoors for the bike park and authorizing the mayor to sign the grant application. Ms. Cabrera and Mr. Hamer.
Hello, Mayor and Council. As you know, we are preparing to apply for a GOCO grant to complete Bring the Joy Park by adding bike features, street bike features. You approved funding for this project through the Conservation Trust Fund, but if we get this grant, we're going to save a lot of money. We submitted a draft application to GOCO staff, so we know or can get feedback from them, so we can apply next month, I think, 18?
May of November.
Yep. So we are asking for approval for the resolution of a, in support of the GOCO grant.
Any questions?
What's the total?
What do you think the total cost is to put this BMX or this bike trail in?
So the project's going to be around $60,000. In order to apply for a mini grant with GOCO, you actually have to keep it at $60,000, so the grant we're applying for is 45, and we'll have 15 from the budget that you guys have approved as the match.
Is it really going to cost that much to move some dirt around for a little bike track?
I think I could spend probably twice that if we really wanted to. It could be. The features themselves are expensive. We're buying ramps and bank turns. We're also buying some additional features, street features for, you know, the BMX kids that you see riding around town. So, yeah, it seems like it. We will be getting a discount on all that stuff because of the group that we belong to, but it seems like 60 is a good start, but we could actually do more in the future if we wanted to.
So is the entire course going to, I guess I'm trying to visualize it, is it going to be a dirt track, or is it going to be a concrete track, or?
It'll be a dirt trail, so I should have brought it. Actually, I did.
There's an existing trail that we can, like.
If you remember the old BMX track that was there, it had a head gate or.
Starting gate.
Launch gate. It'll follow similar to that, but it'll be actually up on the, kind of the level where the Whoopie Doo's used to be, and there'll be a loop going out with more advanced features, and then a loop kind of up by the basketball court, behind the storm pond around the bottom side of that, and then there'll be two beginner loops, sort of, between the skateboard park and the back of the property where those trees are. There's features that are called snakes, that are narrow little ladders that you ride on for balance and technical skill development. There'll be wooden bank turns, little wooden ramps, and dirt landing zones. The idea is for our staff to go in, kind of scrape the property and get it back down to turf, get the weeds out of the way, and then we're hoping to actually either do a joint install with the company, where they send a guy out, they do a supervised install with our staff, and we may just hire them to install it. I think it is going to be kind of important design work, how they do it right.
It was actually a BMX trail that we would be rebuilding.
So I'm not sure people at home can hear you. I don't know if you're close enough to the mic, but, so what are your, what are your plans for using this? If we put this kind of money in there, is, are we just going to let it, are we planning any events, or did you have anything in mind as far as promoting it into the future?
Sure. There's already a large group of kids that ride every day in town, every afternoon. They're at the skateboard park, and you see them around Main Street. I think those kids will highly use this. I think adults will be able to use it with mountain bikes and other skills as well. We're already talking about trying to incorporate a skateboard contest next summer. Steve Sampson, the new recreation superintendent, had done one in his previous job, so that's one of his goals this coming year, is to try to develop skateboard contests, and we could take it even further into some kind of bike contest. It wouldn't be like the old BMX races where 12 guys go out all at once, you know, and this is more of a single-track situation where you'd be following your buddies around. How do we promote that? I'm not sure, but, good question.
Thank you.
The track that's there right now is currently a stormwater retention pond as well in the center. Is that still going to be incorporated?
Yeah, in fact, if things go right, we'll probably improve that situation a little bit while we're doing this.
Now, that would be a cool feature if it had water in it.
The low-lying areas that kind of flood out up by the trees will be the areas where we do the elevated, the snake and the skinny ladder, I think they call it. Some of those features will go over those spots that sometimes get muddy and flooded. I mean, it's not like there's a creek there, but if there was, that's the type of feature you might use on those. And then all the jumps, not, you know, there'll be a jump, there'll be a landing, but there'll also be a way around it. So beginner riders, if they chicken out at the last minute, will be able to go around. We're hoping it will be big enough to please some of the local residents that like to walk their dogs. I know a lot of guys walk their dogs there in the morning before the kids are at the skateboard park, and they'd love to see trails where they could actually go walk through the trees. And there's a lot of property there that's unutilized, that's just native, right now, full of weeds and mosquitoes, and hopefully we'll be cleaning all that up, so.
Whole neighborhood's full of mosquitoes.
Yes, it is.
That's a whole nother topic.
We've done really well with our disc golf course, and, you know, we have a big competition every year. We're really well-known for that. I think we've done a great job with that. I'd love to see that extend into these other facilities, especially if we're going to be putting this kind of money into it.
Right, and, you know, honestly, Dan, I don't know what, you know, a competition would look like, but it's definitely, obviously, something we'd like to research. I don't know if we'd be to that stage of a level of a track, but for maybe kids competitions and stuff, yes, definitely. For adult, professional mountain bikers, probably not.
Probably not.
But I'm mostly excited about the project, well, mostly because it's going to improve space for kids and adults to move more, but it's just going to rehab that property that we own right now that's, like you said, there's some overgrown parts, so it does shed some new, fresh light and energy on company, or city property, so.
Yes, and honestly, this was, you know, back in 2016, there was an original concept done that included a skateboard park, bike playground for kids, bike features for big kids. You know, we've got all those design plans. The skateboard park that we built ended up in a totally different location than the original concept, so now the concept of the bike features is kind of moving and relocating. We're not going to do just a little kid-specific playground, but it'll be a little bit more of a multi-use for beginners and better riders. And I looked at it from the standpoint of kind of finishing a project. You know, we added that skateboard park, and it's beautiful. It looked great. There was no plan to put grass around it. We were just going to let weeds grow again. I didn't like that idea, so we put grass around it. You know, I'm trying to finish this park off and get it to a level where it can be maintained and kept pretty for the future, so, kind of what I'm shooting for.
So you're planning on utilizing that barren section of trees that's back up in the east end of the park?
Yeah, if you go back there, there's already a little trail that kids have built, and there's actually a couple of jumps. So we'll actually use that track that they've already built, as well as kind of that tunnel. There's a beautiful tunnel through a bunch of the trees that goes along the fence line, kind of towards the entryway of the bridge across the ditch, so all of that hopefully will be incorporated. And there'll be a couple of different loops that could be ridden, either all consecutively or individually, so. We actually met with one of the designers from the company that did the original concept. He happened to be in Colorado, and he met us over there, and we walked the whole course and talked about ideas. I didn't see spending the money for a new redesign right now. Didn't seem like it was worth it. We already have the images and the concept that we're looking for, but my goal is, hopefully, when we get the project going, he'll be able to do us a little bit of an image at that time and have an idea, but it'll be an onsite kind of design build once the features are here.
Any other questions? If there are none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I accept, I offer resolution to accept the grant application for our GOCO for a bike park, offer our support, and authorize the mayor to sign the grant application.
Second?
A resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously?
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider an application for a special use permit to allow a home business at the resident, in a residential zone at 824 Fremont Avenue. This is a public hearing. Please keep comments to the issues before council. Each speaker is asked to limit their time to three minutes unless speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations, as I have reserved the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony and questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, and not pertinent to the issues, and to set a time limit on the duration of testimony if I deem necessary in light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. First is the issue of legal notice. Ms. Dunn, was it properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on September 13.
Next is presentation of the application. Mr. Glamier.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. What you have in your packet tonight is a case 18-022SU. This is a special use permit to operate a home business. The applicant is looking to operate a dance studio and hire one employee. What defines this as a home business as opposed to home occupation is the employee piece, so they do want to have a single employee. That drops it into a home business. They do live at the residence where they would operate this dance studio. This zoning district requires that a home business operate under a special use permit, so that's why this is before you tonight. The Planning Commission did review this case at their meeting on September the 24th. Other than the applicant and staff presentations, there were no other comments at the meeting, and Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval of this case for your approval tonight. The applicant is here. If you have comment, if you would like to ask them any questions or desire comments from them. The criteria for review is in your packet. Staff has reviewed that and finds that this change would have little to no impact on the neighborhood. They do have appropriate off-street parking in the back that they have improved to the requirements of the code, so that's ready to go. We've received two comments to my office, voicemails in favor of this application, and no comments opposed. So staff would recommend approval of this case tonight with the subject to the following, that this special use is personal to this applicant and that it can't be inherited, so if somebody else bought the home and desired to operate any home business, they would need to come back and ask for approval. We'd just like to do that so, you know, different home businesses may require different parking requirements or other things that we want to review, so. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have of me.
Is this dance studio currently in existence, or will it be built?
There's a room in the home itself that used to operate as a dance studio, but I do not believe they're operating it that way today. You may want to ask the applicant that question, but I don't believe any studio is being operated currently.
My understanding is the previous owners kind of turned it into a room after buying it from the couple that had the dance studio, and then these people bought the home from, I guess, two people in between, but. I know it's not time for comments, but I want to do it while you're up here. One thing I got a call from somebody in the neighborhood, and their concern was the increased traffic in the alley. In other words, infrastructure that's not really built to handle a bunch of traffic, so I thought maybe I'd throw that out to you right now as far as what your thoughts.
Yeah, it's a good question. So we, the Planning Commission also asked about flow of traffic in and out, dropping kids off, and this type of thing, and the applicants did articulate how that was going to work. They do intend to have people come down the alley, drop folks off in the back, and then exit via, I think, Fremont Avenue, so we'll try to control that as well, but as I think we know, a lot of that traffic will probably just occur on the streets that exist, you know, the road network as well. I don't envision that we're going to have, you know, hundreds and hundreds of cars and kids at this studio. I don't, it's just simply not large enough for that type of volume, so I think staff's pretty confident that the traffic flow should be a real minimal impact to the neighborhood, but it is something that Planning Commission also discussed at their meeting, so.
Do we have a, do you have a feel for how large class sizes would be?
I'll let the applicant answer that question.
We'll get to that one.
Good evening, Mayor, council. We're thinking that there'll be various classes, and depending on the time and the type of class, they will change somewhat. So our little kids in tumbling, maybe there'd be up to 10, and maybe for older teens or ballet class, five or six, but it could vary.
But you're talking like topping out probably at a max of maybe 15 kids?
Yeah, I don't think there is any.
So even if every kid had a different parent, we're talking about, you know, potentially 15 cars, you know, in an hour, and they would be staggered because she'll be teaching different levels of classes, so.
Our hope really is to, once things get going, would be to work with the parents to enter from Fremont, pull into the back where we have parking, drop there, and then back out and enter back out onto Fremont rather than driving down the alley and exiting in the mid-block, so.
Okay, did anybody have any questions for Mr. Glamier on his presentation for that? Only other thing that was going to break up, and I like the way that you talk about the traffic flow. You might be careful, I hear the guy across the street's a real content chrisol guy, so don't get him upset.
You should take some dance classes.
But anyway, one other thing that somebody brought up to me is they said that a lot of times you have kids and/or their parents walking up and down the alley. I'm sure you've noticed, because of the playground at Green Acres and everything too, so if we can limit the traffic going down the alley, not only do we not have the dust kicked up to irritate your neighbors further south, but it also would be kind of protective for the kids, so. Okay, any other comment, have questions for Mr. Glamier?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Next, we'll hear comments from the applicant. I guess we were jumped ahead of that, so. Wish to say anything else or other comments?
I just want, I wanted the better-looking one of us to get up here and address the council and mayor, however. Oh, yes, please. We just really want to thank, thank council for consideration in advance. We're happy to be part of the community, and this truly is something that we want to do to enhance the community and kids' activities, so, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your consideration. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Next is public comment. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'd ask the city clerk if any oral written comments were submitted prior to this meeting.
None are received yet.
Council discussion. Is there any questions from the council or discussion?
I think, like they said, we're always looking for activities for our children and youth to be involved in, and I think this is a good wholesome, you know, activity for them to be in. You couldn't ask for a better teacher. She does a fantastic job. She's a great community asset to this. And, you know, with the loss of the School for the Performing Arts, this has been a gap in our community, so I think, you know, there's a lot of positives to be brought by doing this.
Any other comments? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
All moved.
Second.
A motion by Kevin Lind, or Lisa Northrup, and a second by Kevin Lindell. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries legal action. Mr. Myers?
All right, so the criteria were provided in the packet. Unlike a variance, you don't have to make sure that every single one of those things fits perfectly. You're just evaluating this to generally look at the impact to the surrounding properties and make sure it fits more or less within the criteria provided. You believe that it does, you should move forward with approval. You believe that it does not, or you need any additional information, you can continue or deny the application.
I would entertain a resolution for approval or denial of the application.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve case 18-022 for a special use permit for a home business at 824 Fremont with the following condition, that this special use is personal to the applicant and cannot be inherited.
Second?
A resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you, guys. Good luck.
Just got to watch out for that cranky neighbor across the street.
Okay, next on the agenda is a presentation of a rate study for our gas department and recommendation for an adjustment. Mr. Barron's Nation and McFadden.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is the first of several presentations that we'll have. The city of Fort Morgan uses outside consultants to review our rate structures in our utility departments, I think, as you're all aware. Tonight, we have in front of us the rate study that was done for our gas department, and Mike McFadden has been our rate consultant since 92? 95. 95, so very familiar with our system. We've got, we go out to bid every three years on our consultants to do these jobs, and we've continued to renew Mike because he does such a great job for us and knows our system so well. So tonight, I'll turn it over to them and let them go through the presentation, and then we'll be back in a couple of weeks, I think, with, we still have water, sewer, and electric that we'll be bringing back to you, just as an FYI. So, here we go. I'll turn it over to these two gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff.
Hi, welcome back.
Thank you. Maybe you shouldn't look too closely at what we recommended.
We still welcome you.
Thank you.
I always appreciated your smiling face, Mike.
And I do want to say, not since I was 95, but since 1995. Tonight, we're only going to talk about changing the gas supply charge, not the gas distribution charge. The gas distribution charge was changed along with the gas supply charge a year ago, effective December 1 of 17. This slide is just to refresh your memory of the structure of the gas rates and to explain the difference between the distribution charges and the gas supply charge. The distribution charges are designed to recover the costs associated with the gas department and any charges to the gas department from other city departments. So it's basically the gas department's costs. It's material supplies, labor. And we divide that into two types. The metering and billing charge, which normally wouldn't change with usage. You read somebody's meter whether they had 2 CCF of usage or 1,000 CCF of usage. So it's really just designed to recover the monthly costs associated with billing and meter reading, or a portion of them, I should say. The delivery charge is intended to recover the costs associated with just moving the gas through the city system. So it's receiving the gas from CIG. Once it transfers, it's the city's gas, and then it's moving through their system. So that's the delivery charge. The gas supply charge is simply designed to recover the cost of purchasing the gas, which the city uses Nat, I keep wanting to say Nebraska, National Public Gas Agency, and that gas is transported through the Colorado Interstate Kinder Morgan slash system. And it's designed to recover those dollars, those costs, dollar for dollar, over a period of time. And it's comprised of two components. The forecasted cost of gas, which includes the cost of the pipeline services, the transmission and storage, and the deferred gas. The deferred gas is a mechanism which flattens out the usage over a period of time. It takes the revenue from the gas supply charge and compares it to the costs. Any over or under recoveries are built into the next year's rates through the deferred It was first approved in the first analysis, which was conducted November 1st, to be effective 1995. Oh, and it's, the gas supply charge has increased 12 times in that time period and decreased 10 times, so it's pretty even. Goes up, goes down, goes up, goes down. And a lot of that is caused by the deferred. The next sheet we'll look at is the change in total rates. So this shows all components. It shows that the metering and billing charge is not changing, and neither is the delivery charge. Only the gas supply charge is changing, and it's increasing by 8.21 cents per CCF. The next charge shows that that 8.21 cents is the difference between the current gas supply charge 2034 and the proposed 202855. Now, when we talk about that, I like to put in these increments because these are the key factors. The forecasted cost of gas is going to change every single year. And the reality is, it's a forecast. And the likelihood of equaling that forecast is about the same chance of me winning Lotto and I haven't bought a ticket in a long, long time. It's a forecast, so you expect it not to be exact. The deferred increment is what the current deferred costs divided by the projected sales gives you, and that number, in this case, is going from 11.2 cents negative to 4.11 cents positive. And I don't think, oh, maybe I did. The vast majority of the ups and downs of the gas supply charge is due to a combination of the deferred and the difference in the forecasted gas cost. This next chart, oh, good, it only went to July 2007. What this shows is the cumulative balance of the deferred, which is in the red. The monthly calculation is in the blue. And as you can see, the blue is pretty close to zero. In other words, sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down from month to month. The balance, if you don't look at that deferred every year, can cause you problems. And this next, I hope it's the next chart. Yep, the next chart shows those gas supply charge differences. And rates that are unchanged for long periods of time, and by this, I really probably should say the gas supply charge. What happens is it, you can get into positions of being way over-recovered, and then you got to give the money back. And when you give the money back, and then the next year you go and bring it back to about normal, it's an increase. So you'll see ups and downs, and there were three periods here since, what was it? Since 1995, since the first one. So this is all, this is the entire history. You'll see that October 8 to November of 11, there were no rate changes. So the deferred just kept on growing or decreasing. At this point, though, it was increasing. And then from November 11 to July 13, another two years, and then July 13 to December 17. So those are three long periods, and because of cycle billing, where there's a mismatch between the sales and the purchase volumes, and the time period when they're charged, and I don't think I put that in there, it's just a natural phenomenon. It, I shouldn't even say it's a phenomenon, it's a reality. And it's no different for Fort Morgan than it is Public Service Company of Colorado, San Antonio Gas Municipality, any other gas distribution. The only way around cycle billing is if you want to spend a bunch of money reading everyone's meter at the exact same time as CIG reads their meters. And I can tell you that you have more meters than CIG does. So it's just the way the gas industry has been set up. The impact of the changes, typical weather, typical winter bills, a residential customer just based on 250 CCF, which is 100 cubic feet, CCF is 100 cubic feet. In this case, it's an increase of $20.52 per month. The commercial customer, which uses a little more gas, and it, say it's 500 CCF, it's an increase of $41.05. But that's an average. So this next chart kind of shows by month for each customer. So you're going to have months there where the rate is going to be very high, like in the winter when you use a lot of gas, and then you can see the shoulder months, our declines or increases as it gets to the winter, comes out of it. And then the summer and the early fall, you have pretty flat rates. So customers will be seeing differences in their bill from winter to summer, as they have always seen. That's residential, and then there's commercial, the same thing. Although for some reason, oh, no, that was December. I'm guessing that between November and December, there might be some stuff in the billing system that slipped from one month into another, because that would be unusual. This is my fourth rate analysis. I've done four rate analysis for utilities in Texas, Trinidad, Walsenburg, and Fort Morgan, and every single one of them had the warmest, or the second warmest, in 20 years, because we normalize over a 20-year period. It's the lowest ever. Yours, I think, was second. The other two might have been the lowest, and one was absolutely the lowest. So what that means is that you had, you had a decrease in sales, which probably affected the gas, the revenues, recovered by the, by the delivery charge. However, it does affect the gas supply charge, but that number will be rolled into the next year if you over-recover or under-recover. I guess what I'm trying to say is the deferred is very important, and it should be updated once a year, probably, ideally. I do put the municipal in there, just so the city knows that, what's going to happen to their gas bill. And then if there's any questions, I can try to answer them. I think what we're shooting for is approval, so that any bills after approval would get approved, so it would start with October 1st.
That'll be the next item on our agenda.
Yes. Okay, thank you. No questions?
Question? Yeah, so since, since we have, as you showed in your graphs, we've gone, recently, we've gone long periods where we haven't had any rate changes?
Yes.
Are we, it's the magic crystal ball. I know we don't know what the future will hold. Are we pretty confident, and I'm looking back at Brett and them too, that we aren't going to put ourselves in a situation, because it's a pretty sizable jump, that we're not going to get ourselves in a situation where we're over-collecting? So we don't, I mean, that's a much messier situation to deal with.
Now, I wish I brought my supply, my difference between the purchases and the, and the sales, because they are very disparate. You have sales over a billing cycle that can run from the previous month all the way through the current month, and you're, and only halfway through the current month. And the gas supply is the second month's calendar. So you're having a skew between the sales and the purchases. Even with perfect knowledge, you're going to have increases in the deferred as you go into the winter and come out of this, come out into the summer. It's just, it's almost like the waves in the ocean. It's just a natural order, and you just have to want to make sure that you get it between the waves, not on top of the waves. And that's why you shoot for 12 months ending June, because that's the least difference on an annual basis. Federal government, the Department of Transportation, and Office of Pipeline Safety require an LNU report on June ending, because that's where they most closely match sales and purchases. So it's a normal thing, it just, and we, and it is looked at every month. Every month, we do the, we update the deferred, so we know what's going to happen with the deferred as we're going along. So it's just a matter of being disciplined and trying to get it through. I will say that in 2008, with the new drilling techniques, mostly the horizontal drilling, the prices have remained very, very flat. Now, they go up in the winter, go down in the summer, but when you look at them, they're very flat, which is good, and that's helpful. So we're not experiencing the things we did 15 years ago. I remember being here in October and coming back in November saying, you know, that rate analysis you approved last week? Well, Hurricane Katrina just blew that thing right out of the earth, you know, and the prices went up. In one month, they went up like 15, 20 percent. I mean, those things do happen. And like I say, we, we look at it every single month. Yeah, go ahead.
If I can add something, maybe clarify Lisa's question. The reason, yes, it does seem like a large dramatic change is because our last study was from 13 to 17, and in 17, we were over-recovered. So that's why we had a drastic decrease. So now we're getting more, our deferred is leveled out now, so we need to get it back to the natural current rates, the going-on rates right now, because we're not over or under-recovered. because we're not over or under recovered. And just for a tidbit from where we were at in 2017, before we changed it, well, it'd be previous to December 1 of 2017, the current rate that we'll be moving to in October, if it's approved, is roughly 3.5 cents cheaper than we were in 2015, 16, and prior to December 1 of 2017.
And this will be an across-the-board, I mean, this won't just be the City of Fort Morgan raising rates. I mean, we may be the first one into the pike, but everybody else, public, you know, publics.
You know, and that'll all depend on their, how their situations are with their deferreds and how they handle their studies also.
And I would point out, I can't remember if I already said this once. You can see here that the deferred increment is going from an 11 negative to a 4 positive. Just a natural order stuff. When we put that 11.2 in, it was a negative. If we hit it right on the head, we have to increase rates 11 cents just by getting rid of the credit. In other words, it's like taking the coupon, you already use your coupon for your six-pack of Coke or whatever, can't use it again. So it's just a natural order. The thing is to try and keep them pretty darned close, that it isn't going to get unwieldy.
Anything else for us?
Any other questions, Mark? We do this every year.
At all?
Come back and, and watch the deferred. And we do have a storage capability, so we can buy gas low during the summer, store it, utilize it in the winter, and...
And, and that's another issue that can cause you problems, in that you're buying gas in the summer when you're not using it, and you're not selling it. So there's cash flow problems, too. But I kind of been focusing on income statement balance sheet type things. But, but it has impacts like that, too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Always a pleasure.
Nice to see you.
Next is council acting as a board of the Gas Department System Enterprise for the City of Fort Morgan, and possible action on adjusting the gas rates effective for the bills after October 1, 2018. Mr. Nation?
Once again, I think just hitting upon what they were saying, we're trying to kind of get the rates back to what's a little more normalized, now that we've got that deferred taken care of. We will have another in-depth discussion about the over and under and deferred rates when we get to electricity. But just as a little preview, it's the opposite with that fund. We're going to be lowering those. So this is just a common thing that we have to go through because of all the forecasting and stuff that goes into that. And so, so tonight, we have a resolution in front of you, adjusting those gas rates, and I'm looking for approval. And to be clear, it's for those bills that are effective after the October 1 deadline, so, or date. So is there any questions for me?
Sometimes still new on councils, and we know this is cyclical, and we do this every year, but our big energy buyers kind of just, they're used to this, and they're, they wait for this kind of time of the year, and it's not a big hiccup in their operations, or...
We try to do this the same time every year with all of our different rates. I fielded a lot of phone calls earlier in the year with, you know, can you give me your best guess at what our rates may be doing later on? And so if we know where we're at, we, we have a tendency to follow these things throughout the year, just like they're saying. Tony does a really good job of keeping that deferred sheet updated and everything. So we kind of have an idea of where we're going. They watch the market rates on the gas, we know kind of what the market's doing on the electricity. And so there's a little bit of advanced knowledge if we can work with our bigger utilities. We try to keep them apprised of anything that we see coming. And, and they're very good about going, well, I realize that you don't know for certain until it gets passed by council, but can you give me at least some idea of where we might be heading in the upcoming year? And so we've tried to keep them the same time of the year, so people aren't surprised when they change. And so they know that there might be an adjustment that is made, either up or down, this time of the year.
Right. Certain reason we don't, and there probably is, we don't do this earlier in the year. I just think we're, you know, knee-deep in budget season. And so, I mean, if this had gone terribly awry, you know, this package, we would not be reflective of our own, our own increases. Is there a reason why we do it this time of year?
Well, like this with the gas, we try to do it going into the heating season. And if you do it too early in the year, then you're really taking a guess at what that market's going to do, and what other type of wild things that might hit it and have those type of effects, like hurricanes, like Mike was saying. And so it's, you know, we kind of balance that out. And this year, I think we were able to make, and I know John and Jeannie will go over this here in a little bit, but I think we've made all of the adjustments with our rate studies, because we've got drafts of all those studies in right now. And so we've tried to get those into your budget, so you can have that for approval. So we have a tendency to kind of, it looks like it's all happening at the last moment, but we've been trying to get all this stuff put into place before everything's up for final approval on the budget.
So for constituents, it's more, so we're making a better educated guess?
Yes, absolutely.
Rather than just a...
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution adjusting the gas rate for the Gas Department and System Enterprise of the City of Fort Morgan.
A resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe, vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brent.
Next is presentation on approval of the Mayor's Day Off the day after Thanksgiving. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is kind of a tradition in the City of Fort Morgan for the, the council to grant employees the day after Thanksgiving as an extra holiday known as the Mayor's Day Off. It goes back at least to 2008, at least that's, we've been using this memo for several years. Some people say it goes back farther. I think it does. But it, it's kind of a two birds with one stone thing. It, it balances out our, our, the number of holidays we offer with kind of the standard among municipal governments, and also gives people the day off when there's virtually no traffic in our facilities and things going on. So once again, we are asking you to make all 150 or so city employees very happy by granting us the Mayor's Day Off on November 23, the day after Thanksgiving.
John?
I'm just a little bit offended by this.
Why? Because I took the day off?
Because it's the Mayor's Day Off, it's not council's day off.
The council's kind of...
If we're all approving it, shouldn't we get a little bit of the credit?
You can probably put that to a vote, too.
Employees don't care who they want the day.
Well, it's well-deserved, the city, the city employees do a lot. Customer service is incredible, and what they do for the city is, is incredibly valuable. So this is, this is a, one very small way of thanking them for the great work that they do here in the city.
And this has gone back since the late, mid-'90s.
Wow.
Somebody's been around too long.
Matter of opinion.
I said that with a smile, you just couldn't see it.
I did, too. Any other questions?
Nope.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to approve Mayor's Day Off on November 23.
Second? Have a resolution by Allison Howe, second by Kevin Lindell, vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Mr. Marler, you can have that day off, too.
Turkey Recovery Day. How about if we just call it Turkey Recovery Day?
Don't know what authority I have on your part, but... Next on the agenda is 2019 budget. Mr. Brennan, Ms. Kinney.
Thank you, Your Honor. The electronic version of the budget, the final draft budget, is in your packets, and we've also provided hard copies in your table files, which will make it easier to follow as I go through this page by page. Thank you. I've been looking for... I would never do that. I really never would do that.
Wouldn't be fun.
So this is the first time that, you've seen all the elements of the budget as we've gone through the process throughout the year, and this is really just the first time that they're all in one place. Some things kind of come together at the end. As they were mentioning with the gas figures, Jeannie has gotten the revenues for gas, water, and electric adjusted based on the latest figures she was able to get from the rate consultants, that, you know, Mike's was completed, some of the others are still in process. This is also the first time that salaries and benefit costs, like healthcare, para, pensions, things like that, property and casualty insurance, first time all of those figures were entered into the budget. There were some utilities that were missing from some departments. You'll also see the, a couple of things that are kind of key to balancing the budget. The transfers from reserves are in there for the funds that required them. And then the administrative support allocation, that's where we charge back out to the departments, the costs of doing business by, of other departments. So, and we, we aren't going to go through this, obviously, page by page, because we have seen it all before. Oh, one, one thing on the capital improvement budget, we had put in $45,000 for the extra bunker gear for the fire department, but they had proposed two things. One was the extra bunker gear, and one was a truck. And we used the wrong figure. So that's going to be $60,000 instead of 45,000. That was the cost of the truck. But that's really the only change, and, you know, you guys can make changes up until the first reading of the budget ordinance. We'll use the figures that are in this, in this final draft budget to develop the ordinance that will be presented for our first reading on November, October 16. All right? And if you have any questions about specifics now, we'd be happy to try and answer them, probably Jeannie, for me, but...
But ultimately, we balance, correct?
Right, we're actually quite a bit to the good.
Could you teach the federal government how that works? Huge kudos to all of our department heads, all the departments, Jeannie's department, Finance Department. This is a huge effort for those people that are watching, or any of the media that picks it up. This is a huge undertaking for a budget the size of the City of Fort Morgan, and I don't think the average person in the community has any idea how much work goes into balancing a budget and setting a reasonable budget for the city. And I think our staff, you know, worked tirelessly throughout months and months and months and months to, to do their best to be conservative and fiscally responsible. And I just personally want to say thank you to everybody for the hard work they put in this year.
Well, thanks for that. And, you know, credit goes to all the departments, who all do their own budgets, and of course, the Jeannie's department that pulls it all together. But I think it's, you know, a testament to the process that we use and have developed over the past maybe five, eight years. Where we, we start literally in February, and everything, we're, we're talking about the budget all year long, and it pays off when we get to this point, and we've got, you know, a 79-page document that we've all been through, and, and pretty much know is clean, and so it, it works out really well. Okay. There's no other questions, we can move on.
Finance is fun.
Finance is awesome.
For sale.
I guess we'll bring this back.
Right.
The next one for our reading.
The ordinance.
Next on our agenda is consent agenda.
The consent agenda includes item A, minutes of the September 18, 2018 City Council regular meeting, B, second reading of final approval of ordinance number 1220, rezoning three lots in the same block of Dual Street, and authorization to publish by title only, and C, second reading and final approval of ordinance number 1221, rezoning an entire block in the downtown area, and authorization to publish by title only. All matters listed under item 11 consent agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these issues. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
I would entertain a resolution accepting the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the consent agenda as written.
Second?
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe, vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Next is public comment or audience participation for items not on the agenda. Anybody wish to address council? Seeing none. Reports by officials and staff.
I think a few of the directors have some announcements to make, and I'm afraid of making the same one, so I'm going to let them go first.
Stealing their thunder.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I've got three quick items for updates. A few months ago, there was a comment made, wondering if the police department would be ready if a major event happened. Unfortunately, last Wednesday, we did have a murder in our community. I'm sure you've heard about that. But I do want to let you know that the police department arrived on scene after that call was dispatched in 1 minute and 40 seconds, which is incredibly fast, and the officers did an outstanding job. The evidence was recovered, crime scene was preserved, investigation was begun, and I could not be more proud of them. It was done exceptionally well. The police department currently is at full staff, so I think we've managed to handle that hurdle quite well. The school resource officer, the second SRO update, we've been in contact with the school superintendent, and he has commented to us that they're about two months away from finalizing that. They want to expand the duties and review that internally and make that more of an expansive responsibility there. So that's not going to happen as quick as we want, but it is going to be apparently a very thorough process, and one that I'm looking forward to seeing what they have in mind. And also, the last item, proud to report that the last week of October, October 29 through November 2, we will be hosting the first FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Association, LITA, supervisory leadership institute ever in Fort Morgan. We have 21 people who will be attending, and this is a training class to develop supervisors, and taught by representatives from FBI LITA, so we're pretty excited about that. We're sending several people to that program at no charge, it'll all be grant-funded. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Good job.
So Chief Schultz, we did budget since we did not move forward with the SRO. We did budget that, though, in the 2019 budget.
Yes, we did.
Next Wednesday, lunch is on me, just so everybody's aware. Now, I just wanted to throw out a personal invitation to the council. We're having our manual utility barbecue over in the electric shops. The doors will open up at 11:00. So if you're there at 10:30 with the other people that show up early, you can get in line. We'll take you through when we get the burgers ready to go. So it's our way of thanking our customers for, you know, allowing us to provide their services. I think there's a lot of people that don't understand the advantages of having publicly-owned utilities, and this is our way of letting, saying thank you to our customers, but also putting information out there for people to actually talk to our departments and, and putting information out there for people to actually talk to our departments and get whatever questions answered that they have. They can meet with Tony in the gas department and Doug in the electric department and our water guys and everything. And so we're doing little goodie bags for the first 500 people that are there. We have a few things that are in the bags to hand out, so if you come through the door, we'll have something for you, and then you can talk to the staff and get yourself a free lunch on us. So thank you very much.
And kudos to you and your staff and your subcontractors on the expeditious process of fixing the water main break.
Oh.
That could have dragged out, and then a major nightmare if you guys were very quick in and out of there, and...
Yes, it, we got three things fixed all at once in one hole, so it was a nice repair. So, and CDOT was happy we got out of their way quickly. So thank you for that. I'll pass on.
And we should probably also thank all of the sponsors and contributors to the utility we barbecue that helped make that possible. It's not really on you.
You mean, he's not responsible for buying everything?
His paycheck is mine. Great hamburger.
The other thing I wanted to mention was the annual CAMU survey. Colorado Association of Municipal Utilities came out again for July of this year, and Fort Morgan has the lowest residential electric rates in the state again. And just by 55 cents on a $162 bill, we were in second place for small commercial. So those are really good, and like Brent said, we're going to be lowering electric rates pretty soon again, so that's great news.
So Gunnison was above us this time?
No, it was, it was a co-op. It was, I don't know who it was, Moon River, no, I don't know, something.
Moon River.
It wasn't, it was Moon.
That had to happen.
Hmm.
Okay. That's all.
Anybody else? Bids, meetings, and announcements.
City's accepting sealed bids for construction of the Fort Morgan SH-52 Curv Rams Project, federal aid project number TAP M470-01120666, up to 3:30 on October 4th. And we're also accepting sealed bids for construction of the Center Point Plaza Development Construction Project, up to 3:00 PM on October 8th. On the calendar, October 9th at 6:00 PM is the special meeting for City Council here in City Hall.
And next on our agenda is an executive session for the discussion of personnel matter under CRS Section 24-6-4024F, and not involving any specific employee who have requested discussion of a matter in open session, any member of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any official to fill an office of this body or an elected official, or personnel policy that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees. The following additional details are provided for identification. City Attorney's Contract. I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session. I have a motion by Lisa Northrup, a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will adjourn to executive session.